Good afternoon, and we will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council. We're six twenty twenty to order at three o'clock P M. Joining me online today are Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Bearfield, Councilmember Hector Sabido, Councilmember John Kennard, Councilmember Darius Ewing, and Councilmember Jim Holmes. Please join us now for a moment. Thank you. On March sixteenth twenty twenty, the governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his state of disaster authority. The change was effective March sixteen twenty twenty until further notice or until the state of disaster declaration expires. In accordance with physical distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, this meeting will not be open to the public. This meeting is being broadcast live at W C C C dot T V. The audio is also being recorded. The video and audio recordings will be available to the public. According to the governor and attorney general, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided, however, that the governmental body offers alternative methods of communications with their public official. This includes public comment on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to submit their written comments on enlisted agenda item were asked to submit their comments to the city secretary's office by eleven A M. today. The city secretary will read into the record the comments submitted for items on the agenda at the appropriate time. Individuals who registered to speak on a public hearing item will be allowed to speak remotely for three minutes. We will now recess the regular session and move into work session with a report from the city manager. Bradley.
Thanks, Mayor, and welcome, council. We do have one change in the agenda today, and I'm going to ask City Secretary Hudson to cover that.
Yes, Mayor and council. I emailed you the attachment, an updated exhibit to the boards and commission appointments, and highlighted just the two changes that are included. The first one is on that first page highlighted, Susan Cowley. It's a correction that we found recently, just when she was initially appointed in twenty nineteen, they only did it for a one-year term, and it should be for a two-year term. So her term actually expires in twenty twenty-one. So that's really just a cleanup for that appointment. And then the other is Urban Renewal Agency, the Jason Ramos's appointment to that item. And that's all I had.
Thanks, Esmeralda. Next up, Mayor, I do have one organizational update, and I'd like to invite Amy Balarly-Hyland to sit over here across the table from me. As the council is aware, our director of Public Works position has been vacant for some time, and for the past year, Amy and Jim Reed have ably served as division managers within Public Works. But really, we have a need to fill that director position, given our development activity, our C I P implementation, and the maintenance by road and stormwater infrastructure. Over the last month, the manager's office has been discussing leadership within that department and really working to develop a work plan, a meeting with the city staff to evaluate who we feel like could fill this important leadership role. And after a lot of deliberation and discussion, I've decided to appoint Amy Balarly-Hyland as Director of Public Works. In addition to her two years of service here at the city of Waco, Amy's had time in the public sector as city engineer at the city of Colleen, as well as serving as an area engineer with the New York State Department of Transportation. That's in addition to her private sector work as a vice president of an asset management and infrastructure services company. Amy's knowledge, experience, and strong desire to serve Wacoans, I think, will suit her very well in this role. So if you will, please join me in congratulating Amy Balarly-Hyland as our new Director of Public Works.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Amy. We're really glad to have you in that role. You've done a great job for us to this point and look forward to seeing you lead that part.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. At this point, Mayor, I'd love to invite Larry Holsley to come in and give the Holsley Report.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, it's been two weeks since we've done this, so we're going to cover quite a bit of territory. Let's see if I'm working here. Are we not going? Let's go this way. Okay. The Waco and McLean County Public Health District helped a lot of Waco-area kids get a good start to school by distributing five thousand kid-friendly COVID- nineteen kits to nine local elementary campuses in the La Vega I S D and the Waco I S D school system. The COVID- nineteen kit contained supplies that are not only helpful but needed. Each kit came in a reusable drawstring bag and contains hand sanitizer, on-the-go soap sheets, two-face masks, a wash-your-hands wristband, and educational materials. More free testing took place at Tolliver Chapel Missionary Baptist Church on fourteen oh-two Elm Avenue on September sixteenth through the seventeenth, on September twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, at the Waco Multipurpose Center at, well, at ten thousand, ten-twenty Elm Avenue, and at the Waco Fire Station number five on Bagby on Friday, October the second. The State Division of Emergency Management has received close to forty thousand more tests, thanks to a partnership with the state of Texas and the federal government. These are the new self-administered easy nasal tests. Tomorrow will be the first of many of the days that we'll be able to have those over the next several weeks, actually, distributed throughout our county. Dates, times, and locations are available on the covidwaco.com website, and an extensive marketing campaign is underway that will involve community-wide social media, web, broadcast portals, in both English and Spanish, and these tests are all free for anyone who wants them. If you haven't gone, driven by the location of the new fire station number six and fire administration building at twenty-fifth and Grim, as of today, the plumbing, electrical, and prepping the grounds for pouring the slab has been completed. The contractor is running a little bit behind because of the recent rains we've had, and hopefully this week, the slab will be poured for the administration building, and the station slab will be following soon. Soon, the walls will start going up for all to see. City Waco Community Centers, Blitzel Miller, Dewey, and South Waco are offering free virtual tutoring via Zoom to help students make the grade. Parents can contact each center directly for more information or to register their children. Staff at each community center will lead virtual tutoring and homework programs to give students what they need to navigate through the unpredictable school year. The Camper Park Zoo knows how to take care of babies, and thanks to a gift by Ascension Providence, people mommies have a place that's quiet, comfortable, and private to nurse or use a breast pump while visiting the Camper Park Zoo. The new mommy pad has three rooms, and each one is furnished with a rocker and a table that helps moms take care of nursing needs. The third room is handicap accessible. The nursing pod is located in the meadows area next to the restrooms. Thanks to a partnership with the Humane Society of Central Texas, our citizens can now bring stray dogs or cats they find to any fire station, and the firefighters can scan the pet for a microchip so it can be reunited with its owners without going to the animal shelter. Each station has a scanner donated by Better Homes and Gardens Real Estate Associates, and the fire crews have all been trained on their use. Now, the great way our neighborhood public servants are helping our residents when they need it. Construction of the taxiway Charlie at Waco Regional Airport is in its seventh week as workers from Big Creek Construction address the deteriorating pavement that was identified through part of the inspection and certification process. The reconstruction project, costing a little over one-point-six million dollars, will also will ensure that the safety standards are maintained and enable the efficient use of the airport's taxiway system. This project is being paid by ninety-ten federal grant and should be completed by February of next year. And that completes my report. I want to thank Mark Randolph for some excellent photographs.
Thanks, Larry.
I was all excited to see the video about the microchip because I hear some amazing children in it, but no video? What happened?
No comment.
I mean, that's all right. I just repeatedly watch it on YouTube.
Send us the link, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Phil.
There you go. That view count will be very high. Thanks, Larry.
Hey, Larry, thank you for a great report there, and I'm really, we really can't stress enough how important it is for people to get tested right now during this free testing period. It's a really, really important chance for us to identify people who may be positive and not know it, and get those people isolated so they don't spread it to their family and friends and others. So this is a really big opportunity for Waco and McLean County and the surrounding counties that we need to take advantage of.
Thanks, Mayor. Absolutely true. Today, councilmembers, we do have six informal reports on the agenda. We're trying to set a record for most in one agenda. We have six-eight-eight, which is an update on the summer marketing campaign by the Convention and Visitors Bureau, six-eight-nine, which is a follow-up to a councilmember question on the.
Hey, Bradley, were we going to be able to have questions between each informal report, or do you want to wait till the end?
Oh, I think if you've got one on six-eight-eight, please go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, and I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the report. It's really good to see that the city of Waco during the summer months, we really reached out to our local consumers, which are very important. I think it's key that we are reaching out to the people that are in our backyard and that have seen Waco grow over the years. I was really too pleased to see the type of activity that we received on our websites due to our efforts and some of the efforts that we took place to get the word out, to really encourage local consumers to just look at the different things that the city of Waco had to offer, and the different attractions. I did have a question. I was able to watch the video that was put out earlier this summer. Was there a Spanish version to that video done?
Councilmember, there was not a Spanish version of that video done.
Okay. I would really like to emphasize the importance of if we're going to be attracting local consumers, that we are attracting all local consumers, not only the ones that speak English, while I'm very grateful for them. We also have a very advantageous Spanish-speaking consumer in our backyard as well, and I think we already had the video, so just recording the audio in Spanish and running it on Telemundo or Univision or channels like that, I think would be very beneficial and appreciated. So if I could just recommend, as we move forward with these marketing efforts, that we please keep that in mind.
We sure have. In fact, that has been corrected, and all marketing going forward will be inclusive of all languages.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you guys taking the time out to look at that. Thank you.
This is Holmes. I'll follow up on Hector's comments. What's that? I like that idea, Hector. It makes a lot of sense. But this whole deal on the informal report here was the summer marketing campaign, like a fifteen-second ad that was kind of promoting Waco as a kind of drive market, since there's very little air travel right now, trying to attract business from D F W San Antonio and Austin, which I think is a fantastic idea. And again, as Hector said, two phases. One of them was just Waco only, and then it went out to those other three metro areas. And as I remember talking about it, it was sort of a tight rope because you want people to be safe and trying to attract people to come into your city from the Houston's and the D F W's and the Austin's, sort of a counterintuitive in a way, but I appreciate how you guys handled it and coming up with the idea and getting it out there. It sounded like there was good activity on that website, good cable TV coverage, and I think it's a great tool to remind folks how attractive Waco is, and particularly as we get to a vaccine and as magnolia kind of blossoms again as it returns to TV, I think we'll be in a great position to use a form of that promotional device to get folks to come here. Because I know that as you watch TV, there's other cities, Arkansas and other cities in Texas are promoting themselves as a drive market, weekend kind of market, and I think that fits Waco perfectly with all the folks here in Texas. So let's keep them coming back, and I appreciate the effort on this.
The other thing that it really has done for us is emphasize the amount of work that needs to happen on ensuring that we're doing true destination marketing. And so we have the ability now, you know, while we're not attracting a number of conferences and those type of things, we need to reemphasize overall destination marketing.
Exactly. Good point, Skidra.
Just allow me to thank staff. This was a wonderful report, and it's always positive to see good numbers. And a person who deals with heritage and cultural tourism, especially in small and rural communities and cities, Waco is kind of like the benchmark for, you know, our county especially, of course, but this region and this part of the state as it and has been doing a wonderful job as marketing itself as a staycation or quick, you know, destination, driving destination city with the cross-marketing that's happening with other platforms, you know, with ours, for instance, because with, you know, Waco usually has a large presence at the state fair, which brings in, you know, hundreds of thousands of people who can, are looking for somewhere to drive and do, you know, it still, and I wanted to thank the C V B staff especially for getting information to make sure that even virtually, Waco was still present and accounted for during state fair from your chair. So I think those are good things that keep us in the forefront of people's minds. We've done several continuing efforts, and so whatever it is, keep it happening, but always remember that the visitors come and go, but if locals experience Waco the way we want everyone to experience Waco, then you'll never have to really worry about slumps like this, because even the folks at home will go out and be able to speak to that. I encourage everybody to visit Waco, even native Wacoans, born and raised. Visit Waco as if it's your first time here, because there's always something that we have that no one, you know, you haven't experienced before. So I think that's one of those things that we need to figure out how to push and cultivate, is how to encourage our locals. I know we tried in having local ambassadorship, but I think it's going to take more than that. So that's one of those things that I would love to see pushed and cultivated.
All right. Thank you all. The next I R six-eight-nine is a response to a councilmember question related to public improvement district number one, carryover balance. Take any questions on that at this point?
And Mayor and council, councilmembers Kennard and Mayor Dever filed affidavits substantial interest on this item, as well as resolutions seven-oh-seven, seven-oh-nine, seven-ten, seven-eleven, and seven-twelve.
If it's okay, I'll start off. I think I'm the one that asked for this informal report. I do want to appreciate staff being so quick in getting this to us, and it was very, very good information, especially the carryover balance that I had questions about. But as this report was given to me, it was a double-edged sword because now I have more questions. And so I'm not saying that we have to have them right away, but one of the questions, or one of the two questions that I had is, as we broke, as in the report was broken down, what the total carryover encompassed of the sidewalk repair of fifty-four thousand dollars? I would like to know, and maybe this is just my lack of understanding, like what sidewalk repair the PID is responsible for and what sidewalk repair the city of Waco is responsible for? I'm not sure if I have a clear understanding, and that possibly could be my own fault, but maybe if that could be explained to me. And then also, the planned spending of three-quarters of a million dollars, I would like to see, if possible, a strategic plan of how City Center Waco is planning on spending that. I think there are some great projects that we could invest in or the PID could invest in, and so maybe just a more thought-out, one, three, five-year term plan of how that money is going to be spent. But other than that, thank you so much for the report, and this was definitely what I was looking for. So thank you.
Thanks, councilmember.
Did you go ahead and respond, Bradley?
I think on those questions, I think those are good questions that we'll be able to respond to at a future point in time.
Okay, this sums up, it's kind of following up from Hector's comments about the PID carryover dollars. And again, I'll go back to it. I think we talked about this before, and maybe this becomes a future agenda item, too, just about PID, TIF, City Center, what are their lanes, what are their charters called for them to do? Because a lot of it, traditionally, I've always thought of PID as clean and safe, you know, keep the area clean and safe, and it appears that they've done that very efficiently in a very disciplined manner because they're running excess funds here. But I'd look forward, and just to echo what Hector said, about the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, it appears in the agenda materials that PID organizational leadership is going to work with City Center Waco to maybe come up with some recommendations on what we do there. But again, getting, I need to get more familiar with what are the lanes, or how does PID, what is it supposed to do? Is clean and safe as it? And there are excess funding there. We need to think about how that is funded, if it can go a different direction or float into TIF or float into general or what. I'm not suggesting that by any means, but just, we got, it seems to me we could build some efficiency there. So I look forward to seeing what the PID leadership and the City Center come up with.
Thanks, councilmember.
Jumping in right after that, I think that sort of as we, in the past, established the PID and the management of it, was at a time when we were looking forward to and beginning to see strides taken in revitalizing our downtown area and our city core. And I think as that continues to happen, it's natural that the needs of the downtown area would shift and change. Not to say that clean and safe is not and should not be the number one priority for the PID, but I do think there's wisdom in, and I don't think this is on us to do this, but there's wisdom in revisiting sort of the responsibilities of where those dollars can go for the PID, whether it's looking at other cities and how they use them outside of the specific two clean and safe initiatives. But just as we're growing and revitalizing as a city core, I think it's important to make sure that, especially because we are running in excess on the responsibilities that are given to the PID now, other creative ways that we can use that money as we're changing for the better.
Thank you, council. We'll come back with answers and strategies alongside our partnership with City Center Waco and the PID. Appreciate y'all's thoughtfulness on that. I R six-ninety is a disclosure to the Texas Ethics Commission as required by Texas Government Code and city's financial policy. Any questions there? If not, I'll move on to I R six-ninety-one, which is an update of the city's energy guidance document. I believe Esmeralda's received some public comments that she'd like to read into the record at this point.
Yes, Mayor and council. We received two public comments. The first one was from Teresa Porter, and her comment was, "Don't forget to include your local E V experts in the conversation, especially when it comes to vehicles. You left a few vehicles off your list. For example, the Nissan E N V two-hundred is comparable to the Ford Transit van, and the Hyundai Kona and the Nissan Leaf have been used as police vehicles around the world. C N G vehicles are so last century, it's time to embrace the technology available in this century." I provided a couple of handouts attached. They were attached, and I'll forward those to the council. It doesn't look like Mr. Shaw included any pictures. I know you all like pictures. He does mention lions, so I have included the lion class A brochure along with the Freightliner class six brochure, and the B E V brochure gives you an idea of what's coming from cars to big trucks. Any class six or class A chassis can be custom-built to do anything you want it to be, even a garbage truck or fire truck. I know a guy that would love to build your electric fire truck to replace the Beast of the East. You buy the parts, and he'll build it. Adding charging stations to high-end hotels is great for the overnight tourists that can afford these rooms, and it doesn't hurt the residents of the day trippers. The convention center parking area is an excellent idea. I recommend single-unit J-one-seven-seven-two pedestal configuration. Duals are often unable to simultaneously charge two vehicles. I also recommend an enforceable ordinance that would allow gasoline and diesel vehicles to be towed from spaces if an E V is waiting to charge. I have attached examples of the ICE vehicle warning sign. Please hurry up and build the station so I can start using it immediately. Name the network, and I'll sign up. I also want to encourage each of you to join us on Facebook or Twitter. You can also sign up for our email list at H O T dot electo auto A S S N at gmail dot com. And then there's additional contact info in the handout that was provided. And again, Mayor and council, I'll forward that to you. The second comment we received was from Alan Northcutt. His comment was, "The energy guidance document was prepared with notorious climate science denier Brian Shaw. Thus, it does not recognize the urgency of acting to mitigate G H G emissions. However, the I P C C, the global standard, reported in twenty eighteen that we only have ten years to cut emissions, forty-five percent to avoid climate catastrophe for which Waco will suffer. Thus, Waco must join other cities in acting robustly to slash emissions. On specific steps, electricity source, we applaud the city's twenty-twenty-two contract for a hundred percent renewable electricity for municipal needs, as we have recommended for years, but this is only one for the city government to use a fraction of total municipal consumption. The city needs campaigns or incentives to educate and encourage citizens to go a hundred percent renewable. This is crucial. Buildings, we are gratified the city is placing solar on fire station number six. Going forward, all new city buildings should have rooftop solar, given the emission reduction and long-term cost savings of these installations. And for citizens and businesses, the city should adopt a plan like that in Austin to provide rebates for solar installation. The funds can definitely be found if there are seventy-three thousand available for holiday decorations, electric vehicles. The planned purchase for only three E Vs is seriously inadequate. We do not need to spend time debating this. E Vs are the future of transportation. The science requires it. The car builders recognize it. The California plus fifteen countries are banning sales of new gasoline cars as early as twenty-twenty-five. E Vs are superior in every way. All new purchases should be electric. Appendix three, this data on various electrified vehicles is useful, and I have several footnotes based on ten years' experience driving hybrids and E Vs. Although no many van is listed, the Kia Niro E V is a solution. It is a crossover available now in Austin with thirty-two-point-seven-thousand price and two-hundred-and-thirty-nine mile range. Hybrids are not recommended in twenty-twenty. In twenty-twenty, they still have emissions, certificate maintenance, and can be replaced by long-range battery electrics. Three, the total cost per mile shows E Vs slightly higher than gasoline cars. However, most sources show E V maintenance at half that of gasoline rather than the data here. The Texas two-thousand-five-hundred rebate available until January has apparently not been applied to these prices, and especially important, Consumer Reports lists E V lifespan on two-hundred-thousand rather than hundred-thousand stated for gas cars. Four BMWs are not recommended. The price is too high for the stated range. Finally, charging infrastructure, we have recommended and support the plan for hotel charging units. However, more public charging units are needed, and the large public parks and shopping centers being excellent sites. Thank you. That was all I had on that item, Mayor.
This is Holmes, just in response generally to the energy guidance document. Thanks for the informal report on this and the update, and really specifically thanks to Paul Kane and Kelly Holochek. I know I did some early work on this. And I think this council has done quite a bit in the line of energy and sustainability, testing these new technologies while still respecting the economic feasibility and responsibility that we have to the taxpayers to make sure we're spending those, our dollars wisely. And it's a delicate balance sometimes, but I would like this document, reduce it to writing. We've inventoried all the fleet, we've enrolling stock, we've inventoried all the buildings, we've transitioned some of the fleet, the rolling stock or the cars, all right, transitioned some of those cars to hybrids. So we've done that just in the last couple of years. Solar energy on the new firehouse, the electricity contract that we already talked about, it's all renewable energy. You know, this is the end of it. We'll continue to evaluate charging stations and vehicle alternatives, and it's a living, breathing document. I like the way it's taken hold, and I like the traction that it's gotten. I appreciate city staff for pulling this together.
Thanks, councilmember Holmes. Our next I R is six-ninety-two, which is an update on our industrial pretreatment ordinance, which will be coming to a future agenda, I believe, in October or November. And lastly, six-ninety-three involves a temporary change in water disinfectant. We'll be wrapping around social media and public outreach as part of this in the future in both Spanish and English, because that temporary change takes effect on a day later in October, I believe, the twenty-sixth.
This is Holmes, too, just to follow up on that. It's just maintenance to control the bacteria in the system and sort of the necessary activity. It's not harmful, temporary, only thirty days or less. Just, it's a good report in the I R that talks about that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And that is an approach we've taken several times over the last few years and found it to be effective.
Exactly.
All right. We do have two public hearings on the agenda today, councilmembers. Public hearing twenty-twenty-six ninety-eight is a public hearing to consider the adoption of the ordinance related to impact fees. Assistant City Manager Paul Kane will be stepping in to cover this in the work session. In public hearing twenty-twenty-six ninety-nine is a public hearing to receive comments on the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Housing and Urban Development Action Plan. We have thirty resolutions today, and I'd like to highlight a few of them, actually. A good, strong agenda. The first one is Resolution twenty-twenty-seven oh-two, which is an agreement that allows Service Line Warranties of America to offer service plans for utility repairs to residents in Waco. This is the N L C service line program that's currently used in more than six-hundred-and-fifty cities across the country. Staff is continuing to work on the branding for this program. Staff is continuing to work on the branding for this program and certainly will approve all marketing materials prior to any promotional campaigns, but we're, uh, we're excited to bring that forward today.
Uh, yeah, and I, I appreciate staff's work on this and council's support of this. I mean, this is a voluntary program that allows our citizens the, uh, option of purchasing insurance on the pipes that go from the meter to their house, both water and wastewater. Um, it, it, that is a, that, when that happens, which isn't often, it is a considerable expense. And so to be able to offer this voluntary program, um, with, uh, with the city's support to our citizens, I think is a really great thing. Um, and it's something that I think will be able to help, help, uh, our homeowners across the city, uh, save money on, on, uh, on these major repairs when, if and when these, these problems happen. Um, and there is, uh, some funds that, that come back from the program that we will be able to use towards, uh, utility bill assistance for low-income people. Low-income residences, they are unable to pay their bills, will have the opportunity to, uh, provide some funding to, to support them as well. So, I mean, it's, again, it's, it doesn't cost us anything. It's a great benefit for our citizens. Um, and again, I appreciate staff's diligent work on this and, uh, and y'all's support, uh, in, in, in implementing this in our city, again, along with over six hundred cities in the country.
Councilmember Canard, thanks for bringing this forward. Um, and I think it does present a real opportunity for, for a lot of our citizens. I appreciate you doing that. I appreciate all the staff's work, including all the work that, uh, that our legal team has done, uh, on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next highlights I have for you, mayor and council, are Resolutions seven oh, seven oh-four through seven oh-eight. Uh, those are our annual agreements with the three local chambers of commerce, Syntex African-American Chamber, Syntex Hispanic Chamber, as well as the Greater Waco Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services, and a fourth with City Center Waco for the administration of the Public Improvement District and assistance downtown with economic development. Potentially surprising to some in the community, these annual agreements, uh, make, uh, make the city the most significant, significant funding partner for these organizations, perhaps even except for the Greater Waco Chamber. Uh, these organizations do have significant work ahead of them for fiscal year twenty-one, including alignment with the city's goals on economic development, equitable small business development, as well as continuing to support the recovery from the economic hardships of COVID-nineteen.
Hey, Bradley, thank you for highlighting these. And in fact, you actually took the word right out of my mouth. You know, this just goes to show, um, the economic, economic development, uh, is very important in our community, is very important in our city, um, and it takes great partners like the Chambers and City Center Waco and the City of Waco all working together, uh, to making sure that, that our city is moving forward, that we're providing opportunities for economic development. Um, but not only economic development, but, uh, economic development through an equity lens as well. And so I'm really appreciative of staff's making this happen, council's support, uh, and most importantly, the, the partnerships and the collaboration that we have with these organizational entities that, um, just want to make Waco that much better for people to start and grow their business.
Yeah, definitely takes a village. I agree, councilmember. Resolution twenty twenty-seven one-three, uh, approves the use of competitive sealed proposal process for the leasing of seven fire apparatus. This, uh, project was included in our fiscal year twenty-one budget, and it will seek to replace seven fire apparatus with an average age of more than eighteen years old. Upon approval of this item, staff will issue the request for proposals with an anticipated delivery date of the apparatus approximately one year after the order is placed.
Uh, this is Holmes on that one, uh, City Manager Ford. I think that's a good solution. We've got seven fire trucks kind of reaching, uh, the stage of, uh, needing to be replaced all at once here, and I think the creative way of the lease, uh, arrangement would, uh, probably best, because these fire trucks run, as you know, from half a million to a million plus each, and, uh, we need to make sure our fire department is equipped with the, the, the best technology we can. Yeah, I, I wanted to go back up to seven oh-nine, and this isn't a big deal. We, we talk about, you know, uh, thirty-five-million-dollar wastewater projects and, uh, uh, giant, uh, of, of, pavement programs, twenty million dollars a year. This little one here is seventy-three thousand to do Christmas lights, I think is a cool thing. And we've been talking about it for a few years, and the fact that we're running these in downtown Austin and Elm, you know, it's kind of, uh, I grew up in a small town, and I love going to town and watching, you know, looking at the Christmas lights. That's always a big deal. Uh, and maybe it's jaded and it's not a cool thing anymore, but I, I like the idea of reinstituting, uh, the, the, the lights and, and creating another reason to go downtown and celebrate. Anyway, I want to catch that one, too. But thanks on both of those.
Thanks, councilmember. That is, uh, that'll make for a lively opportunity for folks to come downtown and enjoy all our restaurants. Resolution twenty twenty-seven fourteen is the next one I wanted to highlight. It authorizes a, a grant application for up to three-hundred-thousand dollars from the Texas Interstate, Interstate Fire Mutual Aid System, TIFMS, which is a grant program for a wildland fire, firefighting apparatus. We don't have any matching costs on this, um, but I did want to highlight, accepting a TIFMS grant would obligate Waco Fire to deploy this apparatus when requested for regional or statewide disaster response. I also wanted to highlight this, uh, item, um, for other, two other reasons. One, because TIFMS is my favorite, or one of my favorite government acronyms that exists. Sounds a lot like Christmas, TIFMS. But also, I just, I really appreciate Chief Summers and the team considering an alternative funding source for a, for an important apparatus that'll really benefit the citizens of Waco and the services the fire department can provide. Next resolution I want to highlight is seven twenty-eight, which approves a change order, the fifth one, to the contract with TTG Utilities for South Twenty-Sixth Street, um, in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and the total project now won't exceed five-point-nine-million dollars. Overall, the change orders, including this one, constitute about a nine-percent increase to the original project cost. This, uh, as councilmembers are probably familiar, this project has been impacted by multiple design and construction challenges, which I'm certain residents in that area are, are feeling with our street closures. However, we remain fully committed to ensuring the project is constructed properly and delivered as quickly as possible.
City Manager Ford, I also want to thank you again for, for bringing this before us, that, you know, with, um, I've seen the work that has taken place on South Twenty-Sixth Street, and I've met with some of the constituents there in that area, and I know that it has been a little headache for them to, for the length of this project, but, but they also realize that it's being done properly and in the correct way, and it's going to be there for years to come. And so I really appreciate, uh, the city's efforts in making sure that it's done correctly the first time around, even if it means that, um, we have to change the budget a little bit to make sure that we cover everything at the very beginning and not having to go back two or three or five years from now and, and, and having to patch things up. And so I really want to thank you and, and staff for, for, um, just the, the tenacity on this project and, and, and ensuring that, um, as soon as the project is over, I know that the, uh, the neighborhood and the people living in the area, area will be very appreciative of it, of it, so thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. The last highlight I have for you this evening, uh, council, is, uh, Resolution seven twenty-nine, which again is a change order for the engineering design for the relocation of water and sewer utilities, um, ahead of construction on the Mall-to-Mall project. The Mall-to-Mall project being the forty-million-dollar road project that's aptly named since it connects Richland Mall to Central Texas Marketplace with connected frontage roads and improvements. The Mall-to-Mall project does continue to be a top regional mobility project for Texas Department of Transportation, the Waco MPO, as well as the City of Waco. This change order that's on the agenda this evening is required to expedite our design for the city utility relocations so that Tech dot remains able to let the project in twenty-twenty-one. The additional one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars will bring the total contract amount to just under a million dollars, and will ensure that, that we can be complete on the design by December twenty-twenty.
Bradley, I really appreciate, uh, the city moving forward with that and allocating the additional funds. Uh, it's really critical for us to get that work done in order to, uh, allow Tech dot to get that into this year's, um, in, in next year's projects.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks to Paul for all the work that he and his team have done on this as well.
I think we had one additional comment on, um, potentially IR six ninety-two that the city attorney or, or Paul Kane want to mention.
Thank you, mayor and council. With regard to the IR on the, uh, pretreatment ordinance, um, we are right now soliciting, uh, council's comments as well as public comment on this, and we'll be working with the DCQ on finalizing the ordinance, and we expect that the ordinance will come back to you for a vote sometime in November or December, probably. Um, so that depends on how the process review goes with TSEC. So just wanted to clarify that information for you.
Thanks, Paul. And you can just stay there, because I think you're going to be there in a minute.
Okay.
Uh, councilmembers, today we have six ordinances on the agenda. Uh, ordinance twenty twenty-seven thirty is a first reading that adds a board member recommended by the Greater Waco Lodging Association and that represents a hotel that's involved in the Waco TPID to the Convention Center and Visitors Bureau Commission. The remaining five ordinances are second readings, and if that, if there's no other questions, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Bradley. Uh, are there any questions, uh, before we ask about the consent agenda? All right. Are there any items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, uh, the consent agenda will include Resolutions twenty twenty-seven hundred through twenty twenty-seven twenty-nine, with the exception of Resolutions twenty twenty-seven oh-seven, seven oh-nine, seven ten, seven eleven, and seven twelve, uh, that have all been pulled because of the, uh, conflict that, uh, Councilmember Canard and I have on those items. Um, I will turn it back to you now, Bradley, to introduce the next work session presentation.
Thanks, mayor. Um, Work Session twenty twenty-six ninety-four, um, will be the first work session today, be led by Assistant City Manager Paul Kane. He's, uh, actually stepping in for Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, who is out of the office today. Uh, as council is well aware, Clint's, uh, admirably served as the project manager on this important project since twenty-eighteen. Um, and we really started the project in earnest back in mid-two thousand eighteen as the city was looking for options to ensure we could continue funding our robust infrastructure programs in a post-property tax environment, post-property tax cap environment. The, uh, the impact fee approach you're going to hear today from Paul, once fully implemented, would result in less of our streets, sewer, and water improvements being paid for by the general ratepayers and more paid for by the developments that are actually generating the new demands for service. Paul will be walking us through in detail the draft policy considerations, and as he does, I think you'll certainly see how the staff has sought to maintain a careful balance of multiple council strategic goals on the project, including creating a culture of equity, facilitating economic development, and improving infrastructure. Paul, I want to thank you in advance for taking on this discussion today.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bradley, and, mayor and councils, good to be with you this afternoon. Uh, I am pinch hitting for, for Clint Peters, and I certainly want to acknowledge him and the great work that he's done over a number of years on this project, and, and also want to thank Judith Benton in our city attorney's office for her help. Uh, we have online today Eddie Haas and Jessica Vassar with Freezer Nichols, and they'll be taking any technical questions that might come up during the presentation. All right. Uh, first, mayor and council, I want to talk to you about, uh, a little background and, and the purpose of impact fees in general. Um, a little bit of the legislative history, I think, is insightful on this. The impact fee law was written in nineteen eighty-seven and codified in Chapter three ninety-five of the Local Government Code. And at that time, the law really was born out of inconsistency across the state in terms of how cities and, and, uh, local governments went about, uh, having cost, um, placed on developers and new development. And so from that, um, the Texas Association of Builders was a, a leading force in drafting legislation and, and supported it throughout the legislative process, and, and it's been cited, the Texas law's been cited as a favorable impact fee statute by the National Home Builders. I think it's important also to point out that the law does require a plan for awarding a credit for the property tax and utility revenue generated by the development, and that, that plan can be in the form of a very detailed study, or alternatively, uh, the city can adopt a fifty-percent credit against the CIP implementation costs, and that's the, the latter is the approach that we have chosen here in Waco going forward. Next, I want to talk, um, just about the idea of who pays for growth. Um, as we looked at our capital improvement programs for water, wastewater, and streets, we identified about a hundred-and-sixty-million-dollar worth of infrastructure, um, over the planning period. So the question becomes, who pays for that growth? And, and what tools do we use to make that happen? When you, when you don't have impact fees, essentially all of those costs are paid by your rate and taxpayers. They're paying for all of those fees. When you have impact fees, you're able to shift some of those costs into the attributable, uh, growth that happens in your community. So that's the, the real benefit of impact fees in a municipal context. So let's talk a little bit more about impact fees. Again, fairness, as I talked about in the legislative background, is a fundamental component of the law. It does attribute, it does shift attributable costs, and that means costs that we can tie to new development, um, from the ratepayers or taxpayers to the new growth. Again, it's an effective tool to fund infrastructure needed for new growth, and it is a way for us to get the infrastructure out to the growth when it happens and, and to fund that, um, activity. It is a sound growth management strategy, both the city and the ETJ, and, and does meet some of our comprehensive plan objectives. We talked about the process here. Council authorized the study in December of twenty-eighteen. We have completed development of the land use assumptions in the CIP. We've completed the calculations for the impact fees and completed a policy consideration recommendation, and that involved, uh, seven different meetings with the Capital Advisory Committee as well as five development stakeholder meetings with the Heart of Texas Builder Association and Central Texas Chapter of General Contractors. The plan going forward is to have a public hearing today. Uh, first reading would be scheduled for the October twentieth, city council meeting, and the second and final reading on November third. So let's talk about where we are with the staff recommendation, um, on impact fees. First, in the top line, you see I mentioned that hundred-and-sixty-million-dollar worth of growth. Um, that's in the top line in the three different categories that you see. So you take that total growth and you divide it by the service units in the area, and that gives you what's called the calculated impact fee. In other words, that's the impact fee, um, the impact of the new growth, and, and if it were able to be one-hundred-percent assessed, that would be the number that you see there under a calculated impact fee. The maximum impact fee after credit is exactly that. It reflects that fifty-percent credit that I spoke of earlier. In blue, in the bottom two lines there, you'll see the recommended impact fee, and this is for a single-family residential unit of, uh, one-thousand dollars, um, for the water. And again, that's twenty-eight percent of the, uh, calculated impact fee. Two thousand for wastewater, which is twenty-eight percent as well, and fifteen-hundred dollars, uh, which is the average of the CIF for roadways. Now, on the roadways, it varies according to what different zone that you're in, and it ranges from a forty-five-hundred-dollar max for all three to a three-thousand-dollar low for all three. And in the ETJ, it would be the full fifty-percent of the calculated impact fee. And of course, roadways are not eligible in the ETJ. So let's talk about single-family residential. It's been a, a lot of work that Clint and his team have done, have, have been, um, around this particular topic, and so I wanted to walk you through today kind of where we've landed with regard to single-family residential impact fees. Starting at the top, and we're trying to break this down a fairly straightforward way, um, because it, it can be a little confusing, certainly. Um, so first of all, the, the impact fees that would be, uh, or the development projects that would be exempt from impact fees, that would pay zero impact fees, would be single-family projects that are located in the core, single-family projects where they've had a final plat that's been approved, um, before June the first of twenty-twenty-one, and most of it's already built, built out, eighty percent of it's built out. So we wouldn't charge impact fees on the remaining lots. And then affordable housing, new development that has twenty-five percent affordable housing and an additional twenty-five percent to either affordable or workplace units, those two would be exempt from impact fees. Now, moving on into those that would pay. If the final plat is approved for development before June first of twenty-twenty-one, they would have a two-year period until June of twenty-three where no fees would be collected. So there'd be a two-year window of zero fees. After that, there'd be a runway or a ramp-up in fees that would start at sixty percent. And remember, that sixty percent is really eighteen percent of the total. So we go sixty, eighty, a hundred, reaching in year five, one-hundred percent, which is thirty percent of the total cost. So we go 60, 80, 100, reaching in year five, 100%, which is 30% of the total cost. Preliminary plats that are approved and in place at the time the council adopts the ordinance would follow a similar ramp-up going forward, starting at 20% after June 1st, then going 20, 40, 60, 80, 100 into the future. All other single-family residential would be at $4,500 per lot, which is $1,000 for water, $2,000 for wastewater, and $1,500 for roadway impact fees. And again, those are right around a third of the total cost attributed to the growth. So let me walk through some details of the single-family recommendation. First, Stone Creek Ranch, and we're going to give you some examples of some that fit those different criteria. Stone Creek Ranch, phases four through six is an example of the 80/20 build-out exemption. There's four unbuilt lots out of 105 lots, so 96% built out. Those four would be exempted from impact fees. Next, we have the final plat of the Chapel Ridge Phase 7. That's an example of a final plat that's been approved or recorded before June 1st. So it would have zero impact fees for the first two years, and then as lots come in for permitting, they would pay 60, 80, and 100% for the next three years. And that's, this point I should have mentioned earlier, the way this works at plat, the impact fees are assessed and they're paid when the building permit is pulled for the Next, Landreth Gardens is another example, is an example on the preliminary plat side of the equation. It's an example of the fees that would be ramped up over time, that 20, 40, 60, 80, 100 over the five-year period. And added to that, any final plats that would be done before June would actually get that zero for the first two years and then ramp up 60, 80, 100 from there. So those are some examples of projects that councils approved recently and how they would fit into the scenario. On the infill development, single-family would be exempt in the infill area, and that's consistent with our comprehensive plan that calls for recognizing the benefits and cost savings of using that existing infrastructure in the core. And we've got a map here to show you what that core is. In the shaded area or the lavender-colored area here, those are areas where the impact fee for single-family infill would be $0. It would be exempt. And this map comes from our residential tax abatement policy, which is based in large part on CDBG, is my understanding. So this shows you where that single-family infill would be zero. All right. Shifting to non-residential, again, same kind of format here in terms of showing you how it starts at zero and then would ramp up. So talking about total exemptions, first of all, any change of use that doesn't increase the number of service units beyond those attributable to the immediately preceding use. What that means is if you have a development where it was formerly, let's say, a restaurant, and someone else comes in, buys a property, and wants to run a restaurant again, there wouldn't be any impact fees associated with that. It's only when there's a change in use and going to a higher, more dense use or more intense use that requires more vehicle trips would it then pay an impact fee. Also, we have a provision for existing businesses or what we might call legacy businesses that are existing here in Waco and are expanding or relocating within Waco. They've been operating for a couple of years. Those businesses are limited to a certain grouping there. You see manufacturing, distribution, and those are all the types of businesses that would be, fall under that exemption, so they would pay no impact fee, and we would have a job component as well. Schools, of course, are exempt, and fire suppression systems are exempt. Now, from there, and I have a couple of examples I'll walk you through in a second.
Hey, Paul, this is Hydrum. I'm so sorry to bother you, interrupt you. Quick question, fire suppression systems, what are those exactly?
A lot of times, you will have a separate meter or a separate fire detector check. Sometimes it's called off-the-water system to, that should utilize to, for the sprinkler system to measure the flows into the sprinkler system, so we wouldn't be charging for those.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, thank you.
All right. So now, moving on down, again, projects whose water and wastewater impact fees do not exceed $75,000, the total impact fees, roadway included, will not exceed $75,000. And I'll walk you through an example of that here in a second. For projects whose water and wastewater impact fees do exceed $75,000, they won't pay any roadway impact fees, but they will pay the full amount of water and wastewater impact fees. And again, I'll show you an example in a second. Projects, including multifamily, that are located in a traditional commercial corridor and in the city core, I'll have a map and a few slides to show you that, those will be 50% discounted on all impact fees. And of course, in the ETJ, water and wastewater impact fees only, we're not allowed to impose roadway impact fees in the ETJ. All of these non-residential fees will have the same ramp-up as residential, with the final plats recorded before June 1st, having two years essentially of no impact fees, and then 60, 80, 100 after that for the, over the five-year period. And then the preliminary plats will follow that same five-year ramp-up as residential.
Paul, hey, this is Darius. In regards to commercial development in the city core, I know that you just mentioned the 50% exemption. Are those developments still eligible for any other economic development incentives that would possibly lead to a full waiver on that?
Yes, sir, they are, based on the criterion policies that councils adopted. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay? Good, thank you. On the, this is a map of our traditional, traditional commercial corridors in the core area, and this map is, is from our economic development tax abatement policy. But it also includes a number of key corridors, 18th and 19th, out to the northwest to Vivian, Boski Boulevard, in the Sunset and Brookview areas, Franklin down to Valley Mills, including Floyd Casey, LaSalle, and Robinson Drive down to the southeast. We also have a little bit of Highway 84 between Business 77 and New Dallas Highway and the interstate. So these areas would have a 50% exemption on any commercial impact fees. So I have a couple of examples I'm going to go through with you. First of all, some small business examples. Typical maybe neighborhood restaurant, this local ownership, not a chain, they would have a 5-inch to 3/4-meter, 2,100 square feet in size roughly. You see the water, wastewater, and roadway impact fees there. If they're in the core, it'd be around $3,400. In the most expensive areas, from a roadway perspective, those fees would, would be just under $7,000 for a typical neighborhood restaurant. Dry cleaners, again, that 5-inch to 3/4-meter size, around 5,000 square feet in area, you see in the core, $5,600. Outside the core, just a shade over $11,000. And the different convenience stores, the next one, mechanic shop, and then a Sonic Drive-In is something that's not a locally owned, or not, not a small neighborhood kind of store, certainly a franchise, but just to give you an example of what they would pay. And as you look at these and you look at the size of the buildings and you think about what the cost of construction and site development and all the things that go into this, and we found this typically throughout most of all of our impact fees that we're proposing, is the, the cost typically range, with some exceptions, but typically range around 3% and less. In this case, most of these are right around 3%, certainly in the core, that number drops in half. So typically, around 3% of the total project cost is, is something that is a pretty good measure. Again, there are exceptions, but that gives you some sense of where they are with regard to small business. Now, this one, I'm attempting to show you how the, the $75,000 cap would apply to a heavy industrial project, 200,000 square feet in size. The top one considers a 3-inch meter. You'll see in the aqua-colored how the water and wastewater fees are calculated on that 3-inch meter. So water and sewer fees would be just a shade under $70,000. In the gray, you see the roadway fee, and again, each fee is different for each service area within the impact fees. The total number of units is, is, it's 1,000 square foot per unit, so you have 200 units. The service factor shows the trip load for that particular type of use, and then the roadway impact fee calculated from that. So you can see, if you look at roadway service area one, again, everybody's paying that $70,000 in utility impact fees. The roadway impact fee in area one would only be $3,400, so they would pay $73,000. You look at some other areas, for example, Area 10, you can see the roadway impact fee's pretty high. It's around $270,000. The total cost would be almost $340,000, but we're recommending that's when the cap would kick in, and it would limit that impact fee to $75,000. Down below that is that same development, 200,000 square feet of heavy industrial space. But now suppose that they are going to require a 4-inch meter. Well, 4-inch meter has a different impact fee because of its size and the flow rate. So the total water impact fee, water and wastewater impact fee would be $126,000 for that 4-inch meter project. Again, the roadway impact fees are the same calculation route, but you see now, when we look at the green far right there, the total impact fee is now equal to the utility fee. There's no roadway impact fee associated with that because it's above $75,000, but they would pay the actual water and sewer impact fee. So hopefully, that gives a little more clarity in, in terms of how this would work in, in perhaps a real-world example. The next one is an example of just a dental office, a 5,000-square-foot dental office on the 3/4-inch meter. That meter cost would be the same as a residential, it's the same-sized meter. So you'd have that $3,000 water and wastewater impact fee across all roadway service areas. And then within the roadway service areas, you have different costs, same 5.0 calculation based on trips and mileage and those kinds of things. And, I'm sorry, the 5.0 is the 5,000 square feet divided by 1,000. The 12.04 is the trip factor. So you know, at a medical and dental office, you have a great amount of traffic coming in and out of that. So the service unit factor is quite a bit higher than you might see at a heavy industrial. That gives you the roadway impact fee calculations there, and then the amount per policy. So you see that it would range from $3,300 in service area one to a high of $31,000 in, say, areas nine, 10, and 11. And again, looking at a 5,000-square-foot building, what it would cost per square foot to construct, we're, again, very close to that 3% range as a maximum of the total cost. So when we took these recommendations to the SEAC committee, which includes some representatives from the building community, as well as our planning commission, they supported the residential impact fees as presented and those that we've gone through just a few minutes ago. On the commercial side, they, they requested that the City Council delay the implementation of the commercial impact fees for six months to allow time for further discussion and study by the committee, with an implementation date of no later than December 1st. And that, that timeframe was something that was important to them. They didn't want it to drag out, you know, without some kind of definitive date, so they set that date at December 1st. The staff's recommendation is, is a little bit different from SEAC's. Certainly, we understand their role in this process. We all agree on, both staff and SEAC agree on the residential side of things, and that would start everything June 1, according to the schedules and ramp-ups that we have gone through previously. On the non-residential side, we would recommend that council proceed with the June 1, 2021 implementation there. And we believe the fee structure is sized for Waco. It's very flexible, very adaptable to different locations, different types of businesses, different exemptions. It does have the same five-year phase-in, and that five-year phase-in accommodates current development that's under construction or even development in the pipeline. And that's all accomplished under the proposed ordinance. And the $75,000 cap is, as you've seen in some of the examples, for most businesses, again, development meters typically 3 inches or smaller, that really addresses that high escalation or concern in cost. And certainly, any cost, any meter size is higher than that, you're only paying your water and wastewater impact fees. And the reason for that, in our mind, is that it makes sense for the existing ratepayers who are carrying that load already on, on existing development, that they be relieved as much as possible. So that's why we would like to maintain the water and wastewater impact fees going forward at their full amounts. And then last, the economic development considerations. We have, as addressed of our legacy businesses, as I've discussed earlier, and of course, anytime that we have projects either in the core or in some of our major industrial areas, we are certainly working with those companies to bring them to Waco, to, to cover their costs, to use our incentives to make Waco an attractive place to do business, and that will continue under our impact fee program. So with that, I'll, I'll pause and be glad to try to tackle any questions that you might have.
I'll just kick off and say that I, I appreciate both our capital committees' work over the past, you know, several months or a year or so now, as well as the amount of time the staff and council have put into kind of looking at this to this point. I mean, I, you know, I think your point at the beginning of this whole outset was very well-taken, and the fact that, you know, the, the whole conceit behind these are that the, the new growth will share in the cost of the infrastructure needed to service said growth. And, and I, I think that the plan and the rubric that you have, that y'all are proposing, I think it's reasonable. I think it takes into account a lot of the needs and concerns that have been addressed by the development community. I can understand some of the reluctance, you know, any, anytime you add a fee to things and the, you know, increase costs, it can, it can, you know, there can be some consternation as to the knock-on effects and how it will impact overall cost and availability of not only housing, but also just kind of commercial development. But I think that your tier, the, the way you are intending to tier and implement these, honestly, are probably a little too lenient, in my opinion, but I'm, I'm happy to go along with them. And I think that the caps that you've put on the, on the commercial side are reasonable. I think the residential side is also reasonable and needed. The discounts given to the inner core and commercial corridor areas, I think, are important and, and will continue to promote the development within our, our urban core that we, that we desire. And so honestly, I, I, I don't have, I'll leave questions to others at this point, but I just wanted to say that I appreciate y'all's work on this, and I'm supportive of your recommendation going ahead and implementing both the residential and commercial, or adopting them, and then with the phase-in implementation plan that y'all have identified and that staff has recommended.
Thank you, Councilmember.
This is Holmes. Again, great work by staff and Clint Peters and Freeze Nichols and the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. And Paul, thanks for filling in today. Great, great presentation. I agree with what we are all, we are all thinking here. We've got a, the basic premise of impact fees is placing the cost where, when, and where the impact is created. I think that makes a lot of sense, and I'm supportive of the impact fee concept here because we have a lot of infrastructure needs that we, this, this council has identified and is addressing, you know, inroads, water, wastewater, and some deferred maintenance in, in all those, and we're catching up and doing the best we can to provide the good services and roads to the, to the citizens. So I like the thought process we've gone through here to, to figure out how we implement these impact fees. Because I don't want to place any additional stress on our property taxpayers. Like, we've kind of gotten to the full point there, and we're at a point where the city is growing, and we need to figure out how to accommodate that growth without putting additional stress on the property tax guys. And while considering that, we've got to figure out what is the impact on the, the development. Well, we don't want to disincentivize folks from, from building this either, but it really comes down to how do we pay for the infrastructure? And so I think impact fees are obviously the way to go. The, in my mind, I divide this between residential and non-residential, and just the work you guys have done on residential just is amazing. So we talked about this a couple of months ago. We talked about phase-in, we talked about exemptions, grandfathering, effective dates, you know, how you time this in, and your solutions here have just checked a lot of boxes, Paul and Clint. Clint, I hope you're watching from wherever you are. To me, you've done a lot, you've listened in both the, in the CIAC also, trying to get something that kind of works for everybody. Over a period of four or five years, we're kind of there where we, where we need to be. The, the impact fees on commercial, again, I think we're, we're headed in the right direction. I was happy to see the, in the presentation today, some examples. Because, again, we're, we're, to me, the residential is very widget-y, very widget-y. I mean, you've got, this is a lot for a house. How do you, how do you pay for it? How does it, how is it platted preliminarily? How is it final-platted? How is it permitted? The timing and the, the, the structure is all sort of very objective. Where you get into commercial and different sizes of projects, different water needs, different road needs, it's a little more complex. And I like the start that we've come up with here on, on the page in the presentation about change in use, where we're given some exemptions there, legacy businesses, where we're given exemptions there, and the same kind of phase-in and exemption process we're talking about on, on residential. I think that, that really... I think that, that really works. Um, where I just, I'm getting right to the finish line on, on a lot of this stuff, but, uh, and, and some of it was maybe addressed, and I just need to do more study on, because I was always wanting more examples of how, uh, how the cau- how, how the calculation worked. I know at one point it was zero and one point it was seventy-five thousand, but I was, what happens all in between on, on businesses. So I'm glad you put together, and I want to do some more review of the, the slide, slides in the deck that you had on the, the examples. That's, I mean, that, to me, that's very helpful and helps us all communicate better to the, to the, the, the development community, how, how this works. So I might want to, I didn't see any examples on like warehouses, po- possible manufacturing facilities, strip centers, C-stores. If we could somehow expand that, uh, to just a few more examples so we can, I can get a better handle on it. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm a banker, I'm a financial guy, and I hate to recommend something where I can't, I can't, um, ballpark the economic impact to somebody who's asking, uh, but the stuff you did today really kind of helps me, uh, get there. And in particular, when we're talking about really ball parking that three percent, and I know that's not consistent with every project, but where we're able to kind of maybe say two, three, four percent, whatever that is, uh, helps. Cause it looks like that's where it's, uh, uh, migrating toward.
Yes, sir.
The, one question I had on the traditional commercial corridors, uh, on that map, and are we, I guess there's other commercial corridors when I think about Waco. I mean, is Imperial Drive a, a traditional commercial corridor or Carl May Drive out there? And there's, I know we can't throw everything into this yellow area, but I'm trying to think the traditional, I, I, I need to think about that some more. Maybe that doesn't fit with what we're talking about. Um, the other question I had, this is one, uh, where we are capping some of these fees. Have we in the past had projects where larger developers come in and they fully, um, understand in commercial projects that they may have to put in, you know, a million, million and a half dollars worth of road and, and, uh, utilities? Are we capping this at a low number where they don't have to do that? Or is there a mechanism where, yes, we all, uh, fully understand there's a million and a half worth of work here to do with roads and water and wastewater? Uh, but I'm, I'm trying to find where that gets addressed in the formula here. It seems that we were just capping, even though that road, the, the road part may be very, very big. And I, I know there's some element of, uh, credit there too, and I guess I need to better understand that. And then, and then I guess ultimately on the timeline, I appreciate what, uh, the, uh, CIAC, you know, I think, uh, they had going out to December and I guess internally we're talking about June, um, see, something in there. I would just like to get better handle on, on some of these metrics. And again, it seems like we're at the one or two yard line on this stuff. I just want to get the, the, uh, the full picture before, at least personally, um, a- as we support impact fees, I would like to make sure that we all, uh, are, uh, eyes wide open on how some of these numbers look.
Yes, sir. Um, one of the things I neglected to mention during the presentation, Councilmember Holmes, was, you know, typically as you, as you roll out impact fees and, and you've seen this perhaps in other cities and you'll see it in Waco, um, as we get to that point of defining what the impact fee structure is going to look like, our consultants will be working with staff to develop what are called impact fee calculators that will be posted on our website. And you'll be able to go as any business or anyone, um, you don't have to be a business, anyone can go out and it actually will tell you, you know, pick your location, pick your meter size, pick your plat date, pick your permit date, and it will calculate all these various scenarios, um, once we get it set. Right now, we, we're almost dealing with infinite variables on, on all of this until we get some further direction from council. But once we, we narrow it down over the next few months, we'll be working with the team at Freeze and Nichols to develop those calculators. And again, that will be put on the website for anyone to use. Um, you can see those in, in various cities around the state if you go to their website. So that'll be a tool going forward. And, and it's been a bit of a challenge actually working, uh, um, you know, attempting to answer as many questions as, as we can. There are so many different variables, meter size, square footage, type of business, trips, all those different things. And so you want to have, you know, I think all of us would like to see some fairly simple matrix, but, um, to really make the impact fee system effective, you have to adjust for meter size and different trip utilization and all those things. So it requires a level of detail and that detail enhances the fairness of the program. And so that's something that we're continuing to, to work for, but you certainly will see that, um, as, as a tool on our website and Clint and his team will be using that to work with developers and builders going forward.
I'll, I'll go next if that's okay. I do want to thank Paul, thank you so much for, for the presentation and, uh, and also Clint Peters. I know, I know he's been working on this for years and, um, I've heard nothing but great things from builders and, uh, people that have been involved in the process, how, um, cooperative and open-minded Clint has been. So I know he's not on, on, in the presentation right now, but I would love to give kudos to Clint for just, uh, all of the work and time and effort that he's put into, uh, this work that's going on. And, and I'm like-
Absolutely.
I would, I would say like most of my council members, if not all of them, that I am also in favor of impact fees. I think that it is a, a fee that should be shared, uh, not just by the taxpayers or the rate payers, but by everyone, you know, and, and, and that creates a more equitable society that we live in. Um, I, 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 I think on, um, like Councilmember Holmes, on the residential side, before we came in to this presentation, on the residential side, I, I, it was very self-explanatory to me and, and I appreciate the time that staff has taken time out to answer the questions that I've had. Um, on the non-residential, the commercial, I had a lot of questions coming into this presentation. Um, and so I do appreciate the examples that were put, that were put in the presentation because they gave me an idea. Um, I'm also a numbers person and when you put numbers in front of me, it's a lot easier to understand for my simple mind. And so, uh, I appreciate the, the, the numbers and the examples that were put, whether it's a, a, a Sonic drive-in or a local, uh, dry cleaners or restaurant, et cetera, um, and depending on where they go on in the city. So it made me more at ease to see those type of impact fees that our city will still be, um, competitive and drawing new businesses in and will be competitive and lucrative for new businesses to be developed in our city and, and, and in our area. And so I'm very appreciative of that. Um, I do have a few more questions, but I'm almost there as well. I'm like Councilmember Holmes, uh, I like his analogy that I'm on the one yard line. I do just have a few, few more questions, especially when it comes to the industrial, et cetera, but I think those questions can be answered as we move forward. Uh, Paul, I just had one question for you. In your presentation, you said you had, um, the cost of the impact fees are approximately three percent of the total cost. Do you mean the total cost of the project? Is that what you were referring to?
Yes, sir. I, I was, uh, if you look at those square footages on some of those tables and you apply what would be a, a typical construction cost per square foot of a hundred and fifty bucks to two hundred bucks per square foot, and then you take the impact fees as a percent of that, you're going to see three percent, um, some cases a little higher, but generally three percent and down, um, impact fees as a total cost of building that building.
So, so it's safe to say that, um, and then I know we'll have this with the impact fee calculator, uh, calculators that you guys will launch, uh, but it's safe to say, it's safe to say that depending on the cost of a project, that three percent would be the impact fee or that's approximately the amount that it would be.
It, it would be a, that's a ballpark kind of measure, I think.
Sure.
And, you know, it, it's based on a number of different examples that we've shown you today as well as others that our, our team has worked through. Generally speaking, around three percent is a good number to use.
Wonderful. I, I was just wanting to make sure I was understanding that when you, when you said it earlier.
Yes, sir.
And then the last question I had, the impact fee calculators, I love that idea. Do you know, uh, or do you have an idea of when that will be launched on our website?
Uh, it'll take some time to develop. Um, we have, our, our impact fee as proposed today is fairly complex. Um, whenever you start identifying addresses and, and those addresses are in different roadway service zones, and then they might be in, in a, in the, uh, core as well. And so applying all those different layers, it'll take some time to develop. Um, I, I offer, um, Eddie or Jessica a chance to weigh in on that, but I would think it will take at least till after the first of the year, if not maybe a little longer to get that done.
Yeah, Paul.
Definitely. Sorry.
Sorry. I was just going to just jump in there. We, we have a basic structure, but I, I must confess, your policy is a very structured policy that, that is a new territory for us. Uh, and so delving into some of those nuances there on, you know, the, the, the planning date, permit dates, all the, the exemptions and putting all that in there, it might take a little bit of time, but, um, we're going to be working with staff on a timeline to see when we can get that put together. The key is, once we got the policy outlined, then we can start on that piece right there.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. That makes me feel good. And, and I'm assuming, and please correct me if I'm, if my assumption is incorrect, but, uh, the calculator will be launched way before the June first staff recommended deadline.
Absolutely.
Okay. Perfect. Well, once again, thank you for answering my questions. Thank you for the examples. I definitely have, a lot of my questions were answered during your presentation, Paul, and, and so thank you and staff for, uh, all of your work and, 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 uh, the, the, the employees from Freeze and Nichols, thank you so much for, uh, for your time and effort in this project as well.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Hey, Paul, it's Darius. Uh, thank you for jumping in so last minute and taking on this, uh, weighty endeavor, um, and, and presenting this today and, and just a great job of fielding all these questions. Um, and so now I've got some more for you, so stay on your toes. But I had a, I, I second everything my fellow councilmembers have said in regards to my support of impact fees, the flexibility it gives us in, in using general fund dollars, uh, in other areas and not needing to, uh, seek to get those dollars from traditional resources like, uh, property tax and things of that nature. So I, I'm in full support of that. Um, so full support of, of, of passing through on the, on the residential side. I think everyone is in agreement there, uh, from what I've been hearing. Uh, I did have a question that I think is, is covered, um, further down in the agenda for this item, but, uh, wanted to double check. There are, um, systems in place to waive impact fees for residential development of, uh, non-single families, so multifamily development for affordable housing. Is that correct?
Yes, so there's, there is an affordable housing component with, uh, the measures we talked about earlier, uh, twenty-five percent of affordable housing, then some workforce components as well, but yes, sir.
Okay. Perfect. That's what I wanted to be sure of. And then, um, second on the commercial side, I think, again, much like my fellow councilmembers, there were questions I had coming into sort of this agenda about, uh, the commercial side that you guys have done a really great job of, of getting answers for. Um, I do think that I would feel much better, um, going forward with, with the commercial side, uh, once we had a, a better idea of what that online, uh, calculator looks like, uh, and, and, and just to ensure that it could meet all of the needs that, uh, will arise as far as people needing information for impact fees and that it could be sort of a, a one-stop shop for that so that we're not having to, um, you know, create, uh, the wheel a second time, so to speak. I know that it's, it's difficult enough, uh, navigating the permitting process when you're doing a development that large, and I would hate to, to throw something new in there that added a, a difficult wrinkle. So if it's something that could be, uh, of use and, and make things easier, I'd love to see that, um, as we move forward, talking about, uh, imposing these impact fees on the commercial side.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Paul, and, um, at all staff for the long-suffering work that we've been doing on these impact fees. Um, I was trying to think back about, you know, how long we've really been working on this, and I know that it's been a long time coming. Um, at the end of the day, I think we understand that the cost of doing business is, is going to take this impact fee because we are continually, you know, anticipating growth, we can, you know, but we can't bear that, put that burden on anymore on, on our, our taxpayers and on that property tax rate. So we had to find a way. I appreciate the work Freeze and Nichols presented to staff. Um, the majority of my questions have been clarified due, due to this presentation. Kudos to you, Paul. Um, but I know you were just, you know, glazing the slides that Clint did.
I did change the colors on them.
That's it. Um, but, um, you know, I know that, that one of the things that I appreciate in this is, is in the ramp up part, you know, the flexibility and the ability to be nimble on both the residential side and a non-residential side. But the other fact is that, you know, we are in the business of, of seeing business done and seeing growth happen so that there are, um, waivers and, um, you know, exceptions being made for, you know, businesses who are coming in to do business as well as, as, um, you know, uh, the shift in how small businesses, and thank you for making that clear, as Councilmember Sabido, uh, putting, putting names and particular faces to how it would impact those small businesses. I think that the way that it is presented at this point will be clear and it has been made clear. Um, I know that some of our developers will continue to, um, have questions for us, but I think that this is, like many of the things we do living and, you know, will be made to evolve and, you know, we're all in this together and working together to make sure that at the end of the day, the growth happens, but not on the backs of, you know, people who, you know, may have nothing to do with that growth and are, are already burdened and heavy laden in this as equity is a point of our mission and vision going forward. So, um, I do support this impact fee and I support it now because we, again, as I've stated at the beginning, we've been working on this for a while. And I think it's important for us to, to make a vote and see it through and then grow and develop it to make sure that, that everybody gets the most out of it that we can.
Good. Thank you, Mayor Prosser.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you to all the councilmembers for their comments, uh, and thanks to Paul and Clint and the planning staff, as well as the plan commission and the members of the capital improvement advisory committee. And I want to thank Eddie and Jessica, our consultants for Freeze and Nichols as well, who worked on this. Um, as has been said several times, this is a very important step, uh, for our community to take towards a more equitable allocation of these infrastructure costs for new development. We've been working on this, uh, and it's long-suffering, as Andrea said, uh, for a very long time. Uh, this was a subject that was discussed, um, at length, uh, in the comprehensive planning process, uh, and was in the comprehensive plan that was adopted by council in September of twenty sixteen, so over four years ago. Uh, we've been studying it intensively now for almost two years. We are not on the cutting edge of cities, uh, implementing, uh, impact fees. In fact, we're behind on that. Um, and I think it's important that this council, a council that's been studying this, overseeing this study for the last two years, to adopt this, these impact fees before there is a transition. Um, I think staff has brought us what we've asked for. We've carved out a lot of extensions and limitations for strategic purposes, uh, and we have a five-year ramp up period for both residential and commercial. I think it's time for us to act to adopt these. Um, if we don't adopt both the residential and the commercial and industrial, um, our existing residential taxpayers bear the burden of these costs and many of them do not benefit from them at all. So I, I'm really, uh, I'm pleased with the work that's been done. I think the reality is that all of the work that has been done to create these strategic exemptions and, uh, limits has made it more complicated. But I think there is a, there's a spectrum, it seems to me, between simple and, um, fair. And we're trying to walk, to strike a balance between simple and fair, and I think we've done that. But I think in doing that, um, and aiming more towards fair, uh, it, it does complicate the, the, the commercial side a little bit, um, and it's going to make it harder for us to build that calculator. And, uh, Paul, yeah, I, can you talk to us a little bit about the timing as far as, uh, action on this?
Uh, yes, sir. Today we will, we'll have the public hearing and I believe there's at least one person that submitted comments for tonight. Um, we'll close the public hearing today and then we'll have, uh, the ordinance brought to the, um, October twentieth meeting for first reading and vote, and then the final reading and vote will be on the, uh, November third agenda.
Okay. And it does not seem possible to me that we can get, have that calculator prepared before that, uh, before action is-
Certainly not, Mayor. And one, one thing I would, I request of, of councilmembers is, um, if you can help us as, as much as possible, maybe give us some specific examples of numbers that, that you would like to see or different types of projects and, and just give us some examples of those. Councilmember Sabido gave me some examples on the small business side that was very helpful. Um, if there are others that you have specific projects or types of projects that you'd like to see numbers on, that's a lot easier for us to, to tackle as a team and, and give you a response back, um, versus having a calculator and Mayor- versus having a calculator. And Mayor, no, we would not have that calculator ready by November the 3rd, certainly.
Okay, I just want to set expectations.
Yes, sir.
No surprise by that.
Yes, sir.
No, I think Andrea made a really important point, which is this is a living instrument. It can be revised in the future by council, and the fact that we're starting with just a 20% fee in 2021 gives council some time to look at this, and if we've made a big mistake, a future council can correct it. And I don't, I don't think we have. I think we've studied this and have come up with a very fair and equitable approach to this. But the fact that there is that ramp-up also gives time for any tweaking movements we do.
Sure. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time. And again, if you think of specific examples that you'd like to see, just email the city manager's office, and we'll do our best to get those to you prior to the next meeting.
Any further question or comment on this item? All right. Thank you, Paul. And I understand that Clint is, in fact, watching this, so we can get him away.
Keep your work, Clint.
All right, thanks, Mayor and Council. Our next work session is 2020-695, which will be joined in the room by Jed Walker of Walker Partners and Amy Burley-Hayland, our Director of Public Works. If y'all will have them come in, that'd be good. I won't go into a long introduction on this one, but I will say the fact that continues to stir in my mind about the drainage utility system is that the city of Waco has more than $700 million in drainage utility infrastructure that doesn't currently have a dedicated funding source for its maintenance, operation, and its eventual replacement. Today, Jed will review in detail the considerations undertaken in the drainage study, as well as talk about our current and future drainage needs. And then Amy will follow up with the delivery, the staff's recommendation for next steps. So I'll turn it over to Jed.
Thank you, Bradley. I guess first off, we want to talk a little bit about why municipal drainage utility system. And in our past, we've historically created stormwater service.
Are you going to run the?
Yes.
Now, where's the?
There you go. Good. How about that? So historically, stormwater service has been reactive, and it's been provided through the general fund as needed. And there's been no dedicated revenue source. Revenue source would be needed. We have several items that the drainage system does require. One is your Phase 1 of your MS-4 permit, and MS-4 is Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. This is a permit that is mandated by the Clean Water Act, and it's promulgated through the TCEQ Texas, within Texas, and it regulates the discharges from all the storm sewer systems. There's also necessary repairs that have to be made, as well as operation and maintenance of the entire system. Conversely, water, wastewater, and solid waste are utilities that do have a revenue source for operation and maintenance, as well as for capital improvements. We are currently in the throes of completing the stormwater master plan, and in that master plan, we studied the flooding conditions of all the major watercourses in Waco. And as a result of that, we developed a list of capital improvement projects to mitigate the flood-prone areas. In our many discussions with city staff, we have discovered that routine and periodic maintenance is needed of the existing system, and sometimes those needs are difficult to meet with the funding that's available. Also, the federal mandates that I mentioned before with the MS-4 permit, we believe that TCEQ will make the requirements to Waco more stringent in the future, not less. So those needs are going to continue to rise. And in short, the operation, maintenance, and capital demands are greater today than the general fund can satisfy. So what is a municipal drainage utility system? It is a dedicated revenue source for maintenance and improvements to the drainage system, as well as to the stormwater program activities. We believe that it's an equitable monthly user fee whereby the users pay in proportion to the burden that they place on the drainage system. It's based on stormwater runoff from each property by way of the amount of impervious cover. And impervious cover would be rooftops, driveways, parking lots, sidewalks, walkways, et cetera. A municipal drainage utility system was established by state law in Texas in 1989, and there's a few things that we need to understand as we go through this presentation today. One is that within the state law, higher education and state facilities are exempt from having to be a part of a municipal drainage utility system. Also, undeveloped parcels of land that would not have any impervious cover on them, they are exempt. And then the state law prevents basing the drainage fee on property value. Again, it's only based on the burden put on the storm drain system from impervious cover. And typically, these utility fees are collected on city utility bills. We are not alone in the state of Texas in needing a drainage utility. This map just is a snapshot that shows a few of them in our area. There's approximately 47 municipal drainage utilities in just the DFW cities. You can also see the I-35 corridor that we're a part of has quite a few of them as well. And I think it's safe to say in Texas today that most cities the size of Waco do have a municipal drainage utility system. Whenever we embarked on the stormwater master plan, one of the first things that we did was an inventory of all the existing drainage systems within the city of Waco. And it's relatively difficult to determine a present value cost on the system like this because there's a lot of infrastructure that's over 100 years old. What we did do is look at a replacement cost based on the quantity and size of facilities that we have today. And just real quick in this, for drainage channels, improved concrete line channels in the city of Waco, there's more than 56 miles, and to replace those channels would be about $33 million. The most significant number up here, though, is in storm drains. And storm drains would be the storm sewer piping that's underground, a lot of which is underneath city streets. There's over 300 miles of that pipe, and that ranges in diameter from 15 inches in diameter to greater than eight feet in diameter. But the estimated replacement cost of all the storm drain pipe is over $600 million. When you add in structures like manholes, and I just messed this up because I was trying to be able to scroll down a little bit. When you add in manholes, headwalls, et cetera, you come up with a value of almost 3/4 of a billion dollars. And I am not being successful at all in scrolling down, so I won't scroll down. Let's remember that number. It's about $750 million if you add up all the replacement cost on this chart. Another thing that is a result of the stormwater master plan is when we went in to mitigate the flood-prone areas within Waco along all the major watercourses, we came up with a capital improvement project list. A lot of time and effort went into prioritizing these. We came up with a rank for the 18 mitigation projects identified, and this is a result of that. And I think for the drainage utility fee, what's important in moving forward from this slide is the bottom right-hand number, the total estimated capital improvement cost is a little over $123 million.
We can probably escape, like, out of the presentation and let you see a little bit. Let's give that a try.
Esmeralda's helping us out real quickly here. That does help. That's better. Thank you. So of the programs funded by the proposed drainage utility, the category of service is in the left-hand column where it says category of service. The Phase 1 MS-4 permitting, which that's for detection and elimination of illicit discharge from the storm sewer system. It also covers wet weather monitor and stormwater sampling. It covers the removal of floatables. It covers land development plan review, as well as construction site inspection. And this proposed program is budgeted for the purpose of this drainage utility at $1.6 million per year. The second category of service is operations and maintenance, and that includes channel maintenance, storm drain and inlet cleaning, as well as street sweeping. And the program, we've summarized very briefly over in the far right-hand column. The channels are maintained once every five years, the storm drains and inlets once every 15 years, and sweeping of the public improvement district, which includes downtown, is once per month. And our proposed program that we're bringing to you today budgets $2.7 million annually for this operation and maintenance. The next line item is the rehabilitation and replacement cost of the existing infrastructure, and this can be used as capital improvement projects as well. But this is for existing infrastructure and to replace the existing infrastructure that has structural damage and may be collapsing. It does not include adding new drainage capacity to the system. And for the purposes of this program that we're presenting today, we've budgeted $750,000 annually to take care of that. Finally is the new capital improvement projects, which do add new capacity and which do mitigate flooding from flood-prone areas. We've identified the 18 projects at $123.9 million. And our program, we're looking at doing that capital improvement program over a 40-year span and budgeting $1.18 million annually, and that is to cover debt service on about $15.5 million. Okay, this is somewhat where the rubber meets the road. And the monthly rate determination. And the method for determining the monthly bills that would go out is relatively straightforward. It's the annual cost of service divided by the total number of billing units, and then that gets you on an annual cost, and divide that by 12 months for a monthly bill. From the point of an equitable user fee that we mentioned earlier, this would be based on the stormwater runoff burden that is placed on the drainage system from each property, and that is based on the amount of impervious cover, such as rooftops, driveways, sidewalks, and parking lots. For the residential component, it's the measure of the impervious cover of an average residential lot. You'll see this here in a minute when we go into subsequent slides that, taking the average residential impervious cover of the lot, we then come up with what we refer to as equivalent residential units, whereby for commercial, industrial, multifamily, and governmental sites, we'll take a measure of the impervious cover of each parcel, and we'll divide the average residential square footage of impervious cover to get the equivalent residential unit, and we will refer to this as an ERU. For multifamily sites, we have two different scenarios. Some apartment complexes within the city of Waco has a master meter or one meter to cover all of the units within the complex, and there are some that have individual meters for each of the units. Well, to make this simple, we'll just take the total monthly bill and divide by the number of water accounts. So if it's one water account, just one master meter, then the owner of the apartment complex would have to prorate that amount to each of the units. And conversely to that, if each unit has its own water meter or own water account, then it would be the entire site divided by the number of units and then divided by the water accounts to come up with the amount for each person to pay or for each of the unit renters to pay. Okay, so the way we came up with an ERU, if you look at the graph on the right-hand side, this is a graph that shows the total number of parcels, the number of parcels within the city of Waco, and on the bottom, on the x-axis, the impervious area. And so you can look at, you can see the number of parcels versus the impervious area, and we've got this divided into three categories. The two red dashed lines divide these categories. On the left, you'll see that about 27% of all the single-family parcels of land have somewhere less than 1,960 square feet of impervious cover. The average in that category is 27.4%, or 1,500 square feet of impervious cover. There in the middle band of the graph, that range is from 1,960 square feet to 3,400 square feet, and that covers 40.6% of all the parcels within the city of Waco. And the average impervious cover on those parcels is 2,633 square feet. The one to the right would be the third tier or the large residential lots. And on those parcels, the average is 4,586 square feet, and that's about 32% or a third of all the parcels within the city of Waco. So in that middle band, what we're calling the middle, the range of 1,961 to 3,400 square feet, the average is 2,633 square feet. That's what we're calling an ERU. So an equivalent residential unit has approximately 2,633 square feet of impervious cover. The small category there, which is on the left, that ranges from 500 square feet to 1,960, that's 57% of an ERU. And then the large residential, which is an average of 4,586, is 174% or 1.74 times an ERU. And so that would be the basis of payment within all the single-family parcels throughout the city. We have in the bottom right-hand corner a summary by parcel type, small, medium, and large, the parcel count for each of those, the total impervious cover in each of those categories, and the billable units. If you can look in the bottom right-hand corner of this slide, you'll see that the smallest number of residential units is the small category of only 5,261. The middle, 13,709, and the large residential units comprise the largest number of 18,805. Here are some examples. The Tier 1, the small category, this one has 1,779 square feet of impervious cover. And I do want to remind everyone that this is square footage of impervious cover, which includes driveways, sidewalks, et cetera. You can see how we've got it banded in the orange line. It's not the square foot of the home. It's the square foot of the impervious cover. The Tier 2, medium category, shows 3,309 square feet. And then Tier 3 on the large category, the example that we chose to show here is 15,859 square feet. This pie chart summarizes the total equivalent residential units, and the blue you can see is non-residential, and it comprises 57% of all the ERUs within the city of Waco. The residential is 36%. The reason the non-residential is so much higher is fairly straightforward when you think about it. It's because that there's so much more impervious cover on a commercial-type lot than there is on a residential-type of lot. The other categories that make up the balance to get 100% is federal facilities at 0.4%, city and county facilities 2.5%, ISDs at 1%, and religious organizations at 3%. The red over there on the left is something to note that this chart does exclude. The red over there on the left is something to note, that this chart does exclude state government and higher education because these entities are exempt by state law. Okay. So the way we determined what a proposed rate would be, in the top-left of this slide is what you saw previously in terms of the funded program, the Phase One MS4 permitting. We've estimated the annual budget at $1.6 million. The drainage system operation and maintenance, the budget is a little over $2.7 million. The rehabilitation and replacement of the existing storm drain system, $750,000 annually. And then the capital improvement projects program, almost $1.2 million for a total annual budget of $6.3 million. And again, on the capital improvement projects, that $1,178,709, that is the debt service on just about $15.5 million of a program. As we go down on this chart, if we look at our residential breakup, the percent of the residential parcels on the small side, a little over 27%, on medium, 40.6%, and large, 32%. The equivalent residential units for each of these, you can see there, the medium is what we're basing all this on, it's 1.0. The small would be 57% of that or 0.57, and the large being 174% or 1.74. When we went in to determine what the monthly rates would be, we've looked at four different scenarios. One, the first scenario there, the first line is no exemptions at all. The second line is only exempting the ISDs. The third line is exempting the ISDs and religious organizations. And the fourth line at the bottom is exempting the ISDs, religious organizations, and city county properties. On this fourth one, which is the one that we're bringing to you today, the total number of equivalent residential units is 98,326. And so the cost for that, for the medium residential, the basis of an ERU is $5.35 per month. So to calculate the small residential billing amount per month, that would be 57% of $5.35 or $3.05. And on the large residential rate, it would be 174% of $5.35 to get $9.30 per month. Some typical monthly fees for industrial and commercial users are shown here. The first one is a big-box retail, and this is a large big-box retail, a very large big-box retail, perhaps the largest in Waco. And its impervious cover amount is 748,222 square feet, and that relates to 284.2 equivalent residential units. And so the monthly fee for that big-box retail store is $1,521. The next is a convenience store with impervious cover amount of 60,143 square feet. That would be the equivalent of 22.8 ERUs for a monthly fee of $122. The third one is a bank with a drive-in, and the impervious cover for that bank is 37,407 square feet. The equivalent residential units, 14.2, and the corresponding monthly fee would be $76. Similarly, fast food, about the same amount of square footage as the bank, 36,133. The ERUs would be 13.7 and a corresponding monthly fee of $73. The bottom line down here is a manufacturing facility in Waco, a very large one, one of the largest in Waco, and it has impervious cover of over 1.2 million square feet. That is the equivalent of 474.4, single-family equivalent residential units, and the monthly fee for that manufacturing plant or facility would be $2,539. The notes at the bottom for everyone, just to be aware of, is that these rates don't include any credits in exchange for installing or maintaining features that would reduce the contribution to the storm drain system. And also, it provides the opportunity to promote some green infrastructure elements such as bio-retention facilities, wetlands, bioswells, impervious pavement, rainwater harvesting, et cetera, if we wanted to consider any type of a credit system. We've also had several discussions regarding fee caps for large industrial and commercial users. And let's see, as Morel, we've got the last line overriding itself.
Do you want to stop sharing?
Sorry for the difficulties. We'll get there.
Keep going down.
Right there.
Click on that and see if you can expand it.
There we go.
Now, go back to the full presentation.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
So we've had discussions regarding fee caps, and there are some pros that we've outlined here, that a cap on the fee rates could benefit the large industrial and commercial users, which would reduce the cost to do business in Waco. The cons is that a cap would reduce the overall revenue for the municipal drainage utility. The residential users could end up subsidizing the large commercial industrial users if the budget were to remain the same. It would primarily benefit the larger organizations, industrial, commercial users. The ceiling amount may appear to be somewhat arbitrary as to how we would set that. And then finally, it could increase financial pressure on the general fund. Kind of piggybacking on what we said on the previous slide is that it may be something that we could consider credits as a more equitable approach to implement some best management practices on a case-by-case basis in lieu of some type of a fee cap for the large industrial and commercial users. And so with that, I am going to turn the presentation over to Amy so that she can go through the summation of our presentation.
So the recommendation from staff is that we adopt a stormwater utility fee with an adopted date of November 3, 2020, at a fee of $5.35 for an equivalent residential unit, but that we do not start collecting a fee until November of 2021. So in November of 2021, our equivalent residential unit fee will be $5.46, which means that small houses will pay $3.11. Average homes would pay $5.46, and then the larger residents would pay $9.50. And that $5.46 fee is based on an annual 2% inflation rate. So we would be inflating that rate by 2% every year from then on. We did look at our sister cities quite closely, and here's the comparison for where all of our sister cities are. Right now, Waco is all the way on the right side without collecting any stormwater utility fee. If we were to implement our proposed rate, we would be sort of smack dab in the middle there between Denton and, which is how it falls, at the $5.35 rate. So we believe that that's extremely competitive and a fair place for us to start collecting our stormwater utility fee. So in summary, we're exempting religious organizations, city and county entities. We are recommending the $5.46 per ERU rate. We believe that that's equitable. It's within the market for comparable cities. It establishes a comprehensive drainage program that's funded for the first time in Waco's history and gives us a dedicated funding sources so that we can fulfill our federal and state mandates for stormwater quality. It creates an annual capital improvement plan of about $15 million to address the pressing needs for capital improvements without forcing us to reduce any of our other capital improvement plans for streets, parks, or facilities. It allows us to transfer operating expenses from the general fund over to an enterprise fund. And then the implementation of October of next year gives us the opportunity to test the billing system and prepare a complete budget and do implementation. So the timeline for the rest of this project is to have a public hearing at the next city council meeting and the first reading of the ordinance, and then the following council meeting in November, we'll have the second reading of the ordinance, public hearing on the schedule of charges, and a resolution adopting schedule of charges. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
I'll kick it off again. Again, thanks Jed, thanks staff, thanks everybody for this work. As you outlined very clearly, we are behind the curve, and that most of our other cities within the state already have one of these. I think the rates that you have proposed are very reasonable. I think the need is very apparent. I mean, I know, I know it was before my time on the council, but that I believe at the beginning, the early 2000s, there was a wastewater study that was done that identified 35 to 40 million in projects, and the end result was that not a single one of those projects ever got done, simply because there was no funding dedicated to it. And so the fact that I think that this is just, this is necessary, this is another one of those things where we have to invest in our infrastructure. It makes sense, it's reasonable, you have set a good timeline to do this, and I'm supportive of going ahead and adopting this. And the only question I would have would be that 2% inflation index, are we actually, is that just projected? Are we going to index it based on the actual rate of inflation, or are we just going to index it at an actual 2% per year?
I think that's open for discussion. That's our proposal at this point in time, but we could certainly modify that if needed, if there was some sort of a change in the inflation rate.
Okay. I mean, honestly, I'm okay either way. I don't think 2% is going to hurt one way or another, and I'm okay with that, I was just curious. So, thank you.
This is Holmes. So we're, again, I agree with John on, we're trying to find a relief to property, maybe I'll augment what he was saying. The, we're trying to find some relief to property taxes here, and through what we just talked about, impact fees, again, basing where and when the needs for the roads are. That should help reduce property tax. These stormwater fees are very much in the same vein of where is the burden placed on the drainage utility system? The question I have here, I guess, and again, going to the last couple pages of this, and again, let me predicate that, Jed, great job, this is, the logic of this going through is very well thought out. But as we talk about the proposed schedule of charges, again, I see all the residential in here in a very clear fashion and a very clear comp benchmark, but we're talking about commercial also, right? It's not as clear in here.
Yes, that is right.
And then, I guess, as I go into commercial, again, there's a balance there. As we, as you kind of look at the macro math on it, that you want to redo, you're creating stormwater fees, theoretically reducing property tax fees. In a macro level, that all sounds good. When you get down to the granular level of, all of a sudden, this small business is paying more because he's got a parking lot, you know, and a roof, and probably no grass on his whole deal, but he's not getting a direct offset on property tax. There's not a perfect math to that at the granular level, and I'm just still trying to reconcile that through no fault of their own, some small businesses are going to be paying a disproportionate share of this, and I just got to get my arms around how I get comfortable with that. And then leaving them with how do they remediate their situation by somehow going green and, you know, redoing their parking lot with impervious cover or impervious pavement, just to reduce that burden. Again, I like where this is going. It seems like, again, it's a one-year line on the commercial side, and we talked about credits, but that was only in the context of large industrial users. Am I right there, Jed? It's not really...
No, the credits, the credits could be for small industrial users, commercial users. It'd be somewhat difficult for a residential user to get the credit, but credits are more complex, and we do have time to discuss them and talk about them, but it would be a way to provide incentive, say for that small business person that you mentioned, that they could do something if they were building a new facility to may not have the full, the full amount of the fee imposed on them. I think the challenge that we would be faced with is, is based on the fact that the stormwater utility is based upon stormwater quantity coming off of impervious cover. A lot of what cities are doing to provide some credits is emphasizing the stormwater quality issues. The stormwater quality of having the bioswells, the bio-retention facilities on-site, et cetera. So those are really two, sometimes those can be separate issues, but it would be a way to provide some type of a credit. Otherwise, it's rather difficult in the equity side of things if the single-family users, the residential users, it's all based on impervious cover, and they don't have as much opportunity to go in and have some type of reduced cost. So it's a balance, and it is difficult. We think with the equivalent residential unit scenario that we came up with, applying that to the commercial and industrial users, it has the appearance, while we've been going through the calculations, to be fair, you know, with the small business owner that you described, Jim, you know, there may be examples that wouldn't be as fair, but everything that's been laid out is as fair or more so than the sister cities that we looked at and the other cities around Texas that we're familiar with, that we've looked at. It's difficult in imposing a new utility fee for the first time, but we know that we have the need for it, so the challenge is to come up with that balanced, fair way of doing that.
Okay. Thanks Jed.
So Councilmember Holmes, thinking about that, I mean, it seems to me that there's no way to have a direct offset in property taxes that matches the change because they're based on two completely different things. But if it's fair to tax people based on the burden that they're placing on our businesses, based on the burden that they're placing on the infrastructure, that seems to be a fair, that's part of the equitable shift, and there will be some that end up paying a little more and some that probably pay less, and I don't know how you can avoid that in this situation.
Yeah, just the starting point. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I agree, the starting point just gets sort of tough, but I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mary.
And just to confirm, any sort of use of these funds that we'll receive won't take place until, what is that, fiscal year '23? Or would it be '22? If we impose the fees at the end of '21, I guess we can project and collect based on that, right?
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Well, I mean, I think, you know, this is a very similar situation, and it is part, I think, of our initiative towards equity and finding a more equitable way to find things and to fund things. And, you know, this, we've also been working on for a long time, not nearly as long as impact fees, but I appreciate all the work that Jed, you and your team have done, and Amy and the city staff as well, and I hope we can get this one over the line in the next couple of meetings. So let's be sure we get any questions addressed, and appreciate everybody's work. So, let's be sure we get any questions addressed, and appreciate everybody's work and thought on this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Amy and Jed.
Sure. You bet.
Will you get Serena? Mayor and Council, I recognize we're getting close to the six o'clock hour here, but we do have one final work session, and we'll be joined in the room by Serena Stevenson, General Manager of Waco Transit, in a moment, and she'll be walking us through an expenditure plan for Waco Transit for the use of the CARES Act funding that was provided recently to Waco Transit as a direct allocation. I'm going to turn the floor over to Serena at this point. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dever and Councilmembers. On March 13, 2020, the U.S. Department of Transportation's Federal Transit Administration announced the expansion for eligibility of federal assistance in the amount of $25 billion in CARES funds under FTA's Emergency Relief Program to assist transit agencies with responding to COVID-19. This allowed transportation providers the use of federal formula funds for emergency-related capital and operating expenses. This presentation will discuss program activities and proposed capital expenditures. I will highlight the urbanized area 5307 CARES allocation and capital projects to include bus support equipment. Waco Transit was awarded $7,952,262 in CARES money. This money, this funding was provided at a 100% federal share, which means no local match is required. The scope of work listed here includes qualified program activities, and the allocations listed are the budgeted amounts to be used for eligible activities to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus. Waco Transit System and its staff want to leverage these funds and identify ways to make transit operations more efficient and improve mobility. These funds allowed Waco Transit System the opportunity to enhance our cleaning and disinfecting protocols for transit vehicles, facilities, and equipment, as well as the ability to create and maintain effective exposure mitigation measures. To improve customer satisfaction and reduce operation costs, Waco Transit is striving to monitor transit service quality and identify key features to enhance it. We want to invest these funds in projects that create contactless payment systems and other innovative mobility strategies, as well as measures that strengthen public confidence in our transit services. Contactless payment will allow for an all-in-one solution for seamless fare options. Trakit and Executive will provide digital platforms to improve system efficiency and accountability. Additionally, we are looking to equip our system with a robust suite of products under the TransLock Ride System umbrella. We currently use the Ride System app to track our buses, and we will be adding the automatic passenger counter feature. We are also investing in driver shields to maintain social distance and mitigate overall risk exposure. The capital projects we are pursuing for bus support allow for advanced data collection technologies and safeguarding our users. Waco Transit is resolved to operate in a data-driven environment, and we will continue to look for opportunities to invest in the type of technologies that monitor transit network performance for planning and operations improvement. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Great presentation, Serena, it's exciting to see that. Let's, Hector, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was just going to say thank you for the presentation, and I really think it's great that we're receiving this federal funding and help with our, here locally in Waco, you know, to the tune of $7 million. I mean, it is definitely coming handy, and so I just want to congratulate staff and Serena and her department for really being thoughtful on how that money's being spent, so thank you.
Yeah, I want to second that and say it's awesome to see these funds being spent in a way that really brings our public transportation system into the common age. I think that it's easy to look at a city's public transit system and say, you know, here, the bus is running, are they on time? Check, check, and move on, but when we give funding like this, that, you know, we didn't necessarily account for the fact that we can put that toward making advances that make it cleaner, make it safer, and easier to use, is just putting us to that next level for a more efficient and more desirable public transportation model, so really appreciative of that. And I guess, this only question is, with this funding, and I guess it's half of a request as well, is I have a lot of people that ask me about the lack of covered bus stops in Waco, and I don't know if any of this funding could be allocated to perhaps getting some of those done in and around town.
Councilmember, we actually have allocated some dollars through our Community Development Block Grant Funds in order to address some of those issues, and we will get the map of where those locations will be to you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Serena, for this presentation, and we always look forward to money we weren't expecting. But one of the things I realized in a conversation with potential developers that were coming into the area is how much their growth hinges on how people are able to move in and about this community, and how important it is that we make the advances in our transportation system that this type of funding can do. So it is incredibly necessary and timely, because the people who are making decisions about coming to Waco are looking at all of these things before they make their decisions. So it's good to see this type of possibilities become reality, so thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, Serena, for a great presentation and for all your work on this. Bradley, that's our last presentation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are there any requests for future agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the City Secretary at 5:18 p.m.
Nettis is hereby given, the City Council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, Attorney Briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, and real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. City, Waco Independent School District, and McLennan County owned properties in the area bounded by Boski Boulevard, Lake Air Drive, Cops Drive, and North New Road, and area around Potton Palace Park. Two, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, and three, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session at 5:19 p.m.